Hey Brenda, how are you doing?
I'm switching my audio.
Welcome to ZOO. You are in the meeting now.
Okay, do I have audio now? I needed to switch over to use my phone.
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, good.
So Michelle, are you on? She might be away.
Hey Judy.
I'm here.
So, I just want, is my audio sounding okay tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Hi Kate. So for Kate, Judy, Carl, and Michelle, and our staff, Brenda Hubka is our new alternate that is joining us this evening.
Hi Brenda.
Hello. Hi Carl. Miss, which is Kate.
So Nancy, do we have? We have two members who will not be here tonight, Colin and Diane. Okay, do we have everybody else, or? No, I don't have Meg yet. Okay, let's wait a couple of minutes then. Kate Fuller, Noel. And Brenda, could you do me a favor? When we get into the public hearing, through the commissioners' time to discuss, could you just make a simple statement that you have watched the last meeting?
Do you want me to do that right now?
No, once we start the meeting and we get into the public hearing, yeah, before you vote. That way, that just puts it on the record that you have watched the previous meeting on this part of the public hearing. And and you're authorized to vote since you watched.
Okay.
Is that correct, Dugan?
That's correct.
Where is my?
There's also a mention of this meeting in the paper. Did everybody see it?
Yes.
I heard that there was an electronic sign on Hampton talking about this. I didn't see it, but I was, that's what I was told.
It's just a broad outline of what's taking place. Historic Center Macy New Development Rule. By Ellis.
What paper was that in?
So I got it the mail today. It's in the Inglis Herald.
Oh, okay.
Basically, that the city hopes the plan will increase its sales tax. You know, that we're basically voting on this. You know, I did watch the meeting. You all were very hopeful. We do, helping to get caught up.
Chair, you do have a quorum. If you wish to get started, I think the only one we may be missing is Meg. Okay. All right, well then I will call this, I will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 7th to order. And we need a motion to, well, first we need to roll call to see if we have a quorum. Nancy? Sure. Ms. Townley?
Here.
Ms. Donaldson? Ms., excuse me, Ms. Brown? Ms. Fuller?
Yeah.
Colin Hagerty is absent. Diane Lepowski is absent. Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hubka?
Here.
Ms. Donaldson?
Here, sorry, I was having trouble doing.
It's okay. And Chair Austin?
Yeah.
Quorum is present. Perfect. All right, the next order of business is the approval of the draft June 22nd minutes. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Judy seconded? Not right? I believe so. Any discussion? Hearing none. Nancy, could you call for the vote? Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Ms. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair, Chair Austin? Yes. All right. Um. Nancy has instructed, reminded me that we do not have to reopen the public forum because it was not closed. It was continued till today. But I believe we do have a short presentation from John. Is that correct?
Yes, this evening's agenda, we will have a staff update on the oral report. And then I will turn it back over for some additional public testimony, if there's any. And then we will have some time for commissioners' requests for final clarifications from staff. Then the commission will close the public hearing and then the commission deliberate on motions. Nancy, do I need to be sworn in, or am I still good?
You should be still good from the previous meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm here this evening to do, on the continuation of the public hearing for the case number 2021-003, Title 16 Unified Development Code Text Amendments and Eagle Transit Station Area Specific Plan Adoption. The, the, the original public hearing was published in the June 10th edition of the Inwood Herald, as well as from June 2nd to up till today on the city's website. Also, there was a neighborhood mailing, June 7th to 11th. It went out to all property owners and residents within a thousand feet of the, of the area in question. And then on June 28th, signage was posted at five locations, including the RTD Park and Ride, the Piazza Oval, the Eight Hard Block of West Hampton Avenue, and the corner of Floyd Avenue and South Cherokee Street, and the corner of Inwood Parkway and South Alady Street. And I have here proof, certification of the signed postings. Community development staff request the planning and zoning commission review and take public testimony on and forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for adoption of proposed amendments to Title 16 of the Unified Development Code and the adoption of the Inwood TSA specific plan in support of the city's redevelopment efforts for the city center Inwood Station area. Staff recommends the planning and zoning commission the following findings. That case number 2021-003 was brought before the planning and zoning commission a public hearing by the City of Inwood Creative Development Department. That notice of the public hearing was published in the Inwood Herald on June 10th. And that notice was provided to the Inwood City Court to be published on the city website from June 2nd through June 22. That notification letters were sent out to all property owners and addresses within 1,000 feet of the proposed city center base rezoning area and the proposed Inwood TSA overlay district area the week of June 7th through 11th. That Inwood Community Development Department staff held seven planning and zoning commission study sessions on the proposed Title 16 UDC text amendments and regulatory parameters for new transit station area overlay district. That the proposed Inwood TSA specific plan establishes a specific plan vision, regulating planned circulation design, built form design, landscape and open space design, and plan imitation sections for the purpose of guiding and regulating infill redevelopment within the Inwood TSA specific plan overlay district. That the proposed Title 16 UDC amendments and the Inwood TSA specific plan conform to the goals, objectives, and, and vision outlined in Inwood Ford, the 2016 Inwood cover as a plan, and in the downtown development authorities draft Inwood Downtown Plan. And finally, that the proposed Title 16 UDC text amendments and the Inwood TSA specific plan be forwarded to city council with a favorable recommendation for adoption as part of Title 16 of the Unified Development Code. At this point, staff would like to address the questions that came up from the commissioners at the June 27th, 22nd portion of the public hearing. First off, I'd like to go through the general understanding of the Inwood TSA specific plan goals. Our first goal is that we want to be able to compete on a level playing field with neighboring jurisdictions for transit oriented development projects based on comparable zoning parameters. Secondly, in exchange for allowing increased development intensity, we want to raise the bar for architectural project quality through the establishment of architectural standards and guidelines. Thirdly, we want to specify and communicate to developers a generalized set of expectations regarding land use, density, building height, parking, and architectural standards that the city has for the Inwood TSA specific plan overlay district area. And finally, we are also looking to expedite development review for projects that are determined by staff to have adequately met the expectations and parameters laid out in the Inwood TSA specific plan document. A little few more details, just to go back over the advisory specific plan design review committee. This committee will consist of an outside architectural design firm on a permit basis, and then there will be one rotating member of city council and a rotating member of planning and zoning commission. The, this body will be ad hoc advisory only. The feedback will be used in negotiations between staff and the developer. We also, there was also questions asked about major and minor amendments. The major amendments, I'll go over those one more time. The, the major amendments include major relocation of building slot lines, right of ways, easements. Change, second changes to establish land uses or building types. Third, increase in building height in areas where regulation is not allowed. Fourth, increase in maximum allowed residential density by more than 10%. Fifth, introducing new allowed, loud land uses that are not allowed by the base zone district. And finally, a reduction in established residential and commercial parking range negotiation parameters. And we, in the staff report, we went ahead and tried to develop scenarios for each of those where we, where we believe they, that would trigger a major amendment and circumstances where it would not trigger that major amendment. They consider minor amendments. And I'm not going to go through all of those, but I do want to go through the first one, just as an example. So the first example was major relocation of buildings, lot lines, right of ways, and easements. The specific plan shows the delineation of east-west rights of ways that divide the existing civic center block and the office depot block into smaller blocks. A major amendment would include a reconfiguration of these blocks that eliminated the east-west right of ways in favor of dividing these blocks with north-south right of ways and corresponding reconfiguration of building orientations that would be not facing Inwood Parkway. A minor amendment would be the, of something similar, but would not trigger the major amendment would be if a developer of block C1 chose to break up the block through two buildings with a pedestrian passageway between them. But still, but the buildings were still oriented towards and interact, and interacting with Inwood Parkway. And that, so this, because this would not, this would still be within the character that is being espoused in the special, in the specific plan. This would be considered as a minor amendment, and it would not require an official, going through an official process with public hearings and all, in those types of public processes. In terms of landscaping area requirements, the plan does show that Inwood Parkway is expected to have a median, a landscape median down the center. The plan also basically defers the MUB1 zone district in terms of landscaping area that is required, which is at 10%. And area, landscaping areas may be pooled for two or more adjacent sites if, if, if two property owners want to come in and propose a joint development, they would be able to do that as long as those two sites were adjacent to each other. In terms, there were some questions about park and open space land uses. Sea parks are allowed in all zone districts throughout the city. However, at this time, athletic fields and community gardens are not allowed in commercial districts. It has, was felt that it was not probably necessary to necessarily address those types of uses at this time because the SKP plan wasn't really showing that. And we also felt that the upcoming Title 16 rewrite, that that would be the best place to reexamine those types of uses and whether they should be allowed in commercial zone districts. And then there was also some questions about, would there be any additional outreach for the July 7th continuation of the public hearings? And yes, we, June 28th, signage was posted at five locations throughout the area. On June 30th, a continuation notice was sent out to 182 subscribers. And on June 30th, a posting to the city website news section was made about the meeting. July 1st to 2nd, the city's communications department put out a social media, social media posting. And on July 1st, an Inwood, special article in the Inwood Herald ran a story on the city center rezoning project. Another question was, how will the city exert controls on the operations of developed properties after they are constructed? The city expects to establish various covenants that run with the land and are binding on any future property owner. And a final question, which came in after the public hearing, was paraphrased as, what is the square foot rent cost of the small retail spaces along Inwood Parkway? And what are the reasons behind the high vacancy rates in this general area? Looking at CoStar, the rates are estimated in the range of $22 to $28 per square foot, which is very comparable to most retail within the city of Inwood. Some of the reasons for why there are some higher vacancy rates here in the stretch of Inwood Parkway is that a lot of the, the spaces are owned by corporate entities that are primarily concerned with their residential portfolios and not so much concerned with, with marketing and leasing the retail portions of the project. There are also limitations with some of these spaces, including inconvenient parking, low walk-by traffic, the homelessness situation, and lack of capital investment. And there is also, with this TSA specific plan, there is a plan to address this, the, some of these issues through relocation of parking, increases in residential and employment density, new motivated ownership, including marking, promotion, and programming. In the final analysis, there are three things that we are, that this case is covering tonight. First is a MUB1 base zone district text amendments, which adds all form of visitor accommodation land uses as permitted throughout the MUB1 zone district area and restricting ground for commercial use requirements to the commercial fringe of the 3,300, 3,400, and 3,500 blocks of Broadway only. Second, the removal of TSA base zone district provisions and adoption of TSA overlay district provisions. It includes the removal of the existing but never used TSA base zone district text provisions and subsequent adoption of TSA specific plan overlay district text provisions that will establish the underlying foundation for the adoption of the Inwood TSA specific plan regulatory document. And thirdly, the adoption of the Inwood Transit Station Area specific plan. This plan will operate as an overlay district planning document in addition to the underlying MUB1 base zone district, including additional layers of staff administered regulations, standards, and design guidelines. And that includes my oral reports, and I'm now, we can now open up for any additional public testimony at this time. And after the public testimony, I would be happy to take any additional questions from planning and zoning commission.
And Chair, we have no public this evening. Oh, okay. Um, right before this meeting, I went on to the city website, and was there an actual short presentation that you were going to make, or did I misunderstand what was on the agenda?
There is no plan for any presentation to this evening.
Okay, all right.
That was the presentation that I just gave.
Okay, that's fine. It was very well done. Okay, well, since there's no public, you commissioners, you may ask questions. Please raise your hand, and Nancy will need your help on that. Brenda?
Excellent, thank you. I'm, I'm referring to the Inwood Station Center rezoning.
Brenda, could you, could you please introduce yourself and also refer to watching the last meeting, please? Thank you.
Yes, Brenda Hubka alternate, I'll be at the last meeting in its entirety on YouTube. And it's, I, I'm pretty caught up, doesn't matter. I'm reviewing the plan right now. Well, I have before. But this is just a simple, silly question, probably, referring to page 24 of the official zoning map to rezon city center. Um, I just was wondering why they were broken up into two different colors, the yellow and the pink. And I want to clarify, I want to make sure I understand that the entire district on page 24 that's colorized is the rezoning TSA overlay zone. Is that correct?
Good question. So the, the map on page 24 shows a yellow area, which is directly west or east of the station area from Santa Fe to Alady Street. And this is considered the quarter mile radius area for the station. The pink area is located east of Alady Street, and it stretches to Bannick and Tacoma Street. And that area is considered the half mile radius area. And we, what the planning and zoning commission has done, they have created two tier, a two-tier set of regulatory parameters for governing developments within those two areas. The quarter mile district area allows for more intensive development because it is closer to the station. And, and your second part of that question was that, was both of those areas, the yellow and the pink, the entirety of the rezoning area, the overlay district area, and that is correct.
Thank you.
Judy?
I just wanted to address the advisor, design review advisory group. Again, one, I wanted to make sure that everybody was up to up to speed that, you know, how the changes, the administrative changes, and, and what triggered a minor and a major. I want to understand who decides that the, because I'm still not clear, what triggers, you say it's ad hoc, the design review committee thing, so how is that triggered? Somehow, someone, whether it's a council, the council member who's been assigned to be a part of that, or the planning and zoning member, or the architect, somebody has to say, I think this warrants a, a design review. And I'm not clear still on what triggers that, because I don't see anything that says this warrants this design review committee to be assembled. And I believe, in my personal opinion, that that should be a city council member. So somehow, they need, somebody always needs to be in the loop on any of these developments, who then says, I'm not comfortable with moving forward without having more input from this committee. So I need to understand that, how that gets triggered.
All right, so when, when a developer submits a site plan, it, we consider that automatically a trigger for the design review committee. For any project, there will automatically be a trigger for having, going through that process, the design review committee review of that plan with the architectural advisor. We will, we will, probably will have to go to council and ask and have them appoint who they want to take the first leap at that, who wants to be the first one on, and may, and probably will probably have to go to you guys and ask that same question. And hopefully you guys can come to consensus about who gets to go first on that committee. But forever, throughout week, we believe that any project that comes in, where they're submitting an application, will have to go through that process.
I do not see any other hands raised, Chair. Okay, Brenda, I, I see that you have stopped your video, and since you are a commissioner, you need to have, you need to have your live video on, unless, of course, you need to like, leave to go to the restroom or something like that. So just wanted to, little, little rule that you're not aware of. Only Nancy and other people get to do what, do that, so.
My back, okay.
I have a quick question. One of my neighbors said that they heard from Dan that there was no limit to the height of residential building or other building in this area. Can you address that for me, Dan, and refresh my memory?
Does that really sound like something I would say?
That's why I'm asking the question. I said, I'm on planning and zoning, and I don't think that that's what's going to happen, but you know, I'll ask the question. I said, I'm on rezoning and I don't think that that's what's going to happen, but you know, I'll ask the question again, so.
That is great. That's the funniest thing I've heard all day. John, could you just remind everybody what the relevant heights are?
Okay, yes. Within the half mile distance radius, the, the height, the, um, maximum height has been established at a hundred and twenty-five feet. That has also been established as the base height in the yellow or the quarter mile area. However, there is a provision which the plans learning commission wanted to, the majority of the group wanted to see. They did not want to limit necessarily a really good project if it was taller. And so it is basically possible for staff to negotiate higher than a hundred and twenty-five feet. And so there is an allowance within that quarter mile area for going higher. And the, the group consensus was that we didn't want to artificially limit, place limits on ourselves and that, that the city needed to have this kind of ability to be able to negotiate a, a good project. And if somebody comes along and wants to do a really spectacular project, but they want to go higher and they want to have a, uh, they want to bring a lot of employment, let's say, this, that's typically what this might be is a, an office building, the, the city should not limit itself within that quarter mile area. So I guess technically that person has some leg to stand on.
So a hundred and twenty-five feet translates to about how many stories?
So our current, the current buildings that are in this area that are about that tall are the Chase Tower and the Wells Fargo Tower. Those are both ten-story buildings and they're about a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
Can I add one thing too? I think we've talked about this before, um, on Google, Chase is said to be one forty-one. I don't know if Google's wrong, but it's possible that it could be like twenty feet taller than one twenty.
Uh, so I have kind of looked up at in different places, what those, what, and I have found different heights for it. I actually went into the Chase Tower in it, in the stairwell and it looked like the stories were twelve feet tall to me, about twice my height. And so I, I believe that it is a hundred and twenty feet.
Yeah, I remember they have really tall ceilings in there.
Yes.
I see Carl's hand up.
Along, along the, uh, the height, the, uh, the, in the, in the TSA, they actually, it says the, um, tran- transit stations, specific plan on, uh, on page eighty-eight is said land use and it's in the land use, it says that to maximize the mountain views and to maximize the, the views of down the Inwood corridor to Inwood Parkway corridor to the light rail station. Uh, how are you gonna maximize mountain views with a hundred and twenty-five foot buildings scattered all over the place?
Uh, that's a good question and it's kind of hard to answer when, when you're not, when you haven't developed a, when a site plan hasn't been developed for it. Obviously, not every square inch of this area will have, be able to have a maximized view, that's just not possible. But we believe that with, that you can, uh, but through the orientation of buildings and potentially creating skinnier buildings, uh, taller buildings that, that you can, I think that the developers will be cognizant of that because that is a selling point for getting tenants in. Tenants want to have mountain views and you can probably charge greater rents for those views as well. And so I believe that the developers will have a strong incentive to do that.
Country Club Towers is a prime example of that, that's on Spear and Downing-ish, where the builder made very tall skinny buildings, two of them, so that everybody could basically look around their balcony and see the, the western mountains. And the developer there actually, Patrick Bro, um, is fabulously wealthy and he also actually purchased all of the buildings to the west of those country club towers so that nobody can build something to inhibit the view, so. Just a little anecdotal thing here, but. Kate, I saw you writing down things, Kate Townley, I'm guessing you might have a question.
I actually don't right now.
I, it was a guess. Any other questions?
Do not see any hands. Oh, Carl has a question. Great.
The parking spaces, you had multiple presentations on, uh, knocking the, uh, the spaces down from one point five to one point zero and then a lot of the specifics you came up with were Denver, in Denver. Are those actually built or was that a plan that they have? You, you went down to like a quarter of a space per unit. Quarter of a car space per unit.
Uh, I believe that those are adopted as part of the Denver's municipal cities zoning code.
So not necessarily potentially built?
Uh, I think they've been in place for quite a while and so I'm, and there's been a lot of development going on in Denver. And so I would have to think that, uh, in fact, I do know of some examples that actually I did give in some study session presentations where, yes, there are existing buildings in the city in kind of Denver that are part of those types of ratios.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Is this going to be one of the shortest meetings ever?
Michelle, you may, I'm not sure if you fully recognize this, but we have a, we do have a presentation on the downtown plan of the downtown development authority. So Hillary and I will be giving that after you're done with this matter.
Okay, so I, I did, I was, I did see something that there was a presentation, so I'm not completely crazy on that. All right.
Kate Fuller has her hand up.
Kate?
Hi, um, I just had a question about, I know, um, the gentleman last week from McMullins was talking about opening up for athletic field use. I just didn't know if there was more to that. Um, I live right next to Miller Field and I can also walk to that area, so I wasn't sure. I looked up in the code what counts as an athletic field. And it said, designed for outdoor games, sports such as baseball, football and soccer. But I wasn't sure if there was like a dream in mind that went with that or a professional teamer. I just didn't know if I missed that.
Uh, I, I corresponded with Michael Feeley just today, actually. And he sent me over a kind of a flyer that it sounds like to me that he is looking to bring some kind of rugby league to town. It's seems like it's pretty far distant, but that seems to be his intention. He gave me some examples of, of sporting, recreational use type developments that were located on tops of major buildings in, throughout the world. So that was quite interesting. And it also triggered in my mind the thought that I had a, about a year ago, which was there was something questions asked about, well, how do we, how can we offer more open space recreational opportunities in the medical district? Especially when we're having some, you know, new senior developments like Aetra opening up. And it's a very difficult situation over there too, because there's just not available land. And it's all built up and, uh, and my thought was, well, those parking structures that they have over there are quite empty. And you could do something like that on the top of a parking structure, utilize the top floor for that kind of use. And, and so it was an interesting idea from Michael Feeley that I hope that we keep in the back of our minds when we're soliciting developers.
Who's gonna go get the ball when it goes over the fence?
Well, they seem to have that, they have, I think they have the figured that out and the fact that they have very, very tall things to, on the sides of the building to catch those things.
And now in indoor soccer, Michelle, they have like netting that goes to the ceiling and surrounds the whole, you know,
Okay.
arena, so that balls just like fall back in, so maybe that's how it is too. I'll have to Google after this.
There you go, yeah. That'll work.
Kate Townley?
I guess just a follow-up on that. Is that then, um, since right now athletic fields are, are recreational use is not, um, uh, allowed by right? If it's an ex, like a accessory use, essentially something that's put on top of a parking structure on a roof, would that be allowed or is that something that would still be, to be determined, like in an overall, in the, the larger code rewrite?
You know, I, I've been thinking that that, that might determination might be allowable today if it was not the main use. It was an accessory on top of some other type of that use that was the main use. I think we'd be probably good right now.
Interesting thought. Any other questions? Oh, Carl?
I, you mentioned on the, uh, the mountain view, you know, there's, there's no real plans here, so. One of the concerns I have is, uh, there is very little limits on what we're, uh, looking at here. It's a very, it's, it's, it's basically like signing a blank check for a developer. Uh, they can, they can build pretty much anything they want, anywhere they want, is what, what are the, uh, what do we, what kind of control does, uh, city council or planning and zoning have on development? When somebody decides that they want to build something, do they have to submit a plan that has to be approved and then, uh, go from there?
Well, I would take some exception to that. I think that this TSA specific plan does call out what triggers major amendments and that, that there is a plan that the developers have to follow. They can't necessarily do whatever they want. Uh, I think the plan lays out a land use pattern with, uh, right of ways and expectations that they cannot necessarily deviate from. There's also a lot of architectural standards that Inwood has never had before and that they must adhere to in terms of quality of construction. And in terms of applying for these things, the, they will have to submit application, formal applications to the, the community development department. And the community development department will go over those and if they conform to this TSA so planned document, then they can go approved administratively. However, if they do, if their plans are showing something different that would require a major amendment, then the by and zoning mission, that will trigger the, uh, the administration to begin the planning and zoning, uh, public hearing process. And same with city council, it requires city council approval as well. And then, yes, and then I think we also, every project will also have to, regardless of whether it goes to, have to go through a major amendment, they're all going to have to go through the design review committee.
You say the quality of the building materials, is that higher than the Bell Cherry Hills apartment building? Or is it the equal to? Or do you know?
Uh, I believe that this will, that this will trigger a higher quality standards than the Bell Cherry Hills.
The ten percent on the green space, that, uh, that's not a whole lot. Really like, this is downtown area, this, we should have some greenery down there. But I would like to see twenty or twenty-five percent in there. That's, um, that's a bunch, if it's going to do parking structures and apartments, that's, that's gonna be, uh, not, not real, um, nice to walk around down there.
Uh, so we decided, we opted for
I mean, it's kind of like to be.
Uh, so to answer the question, so the ten percent is, comes directly from our current M U B one zone district designation today. Uh, the, the downtown area is intended to be a more urban style of landscape. It's more similar to, uh, something probably like Cherry Creek or downtown Denver or even something like downtown Golden, as opposed to something that looks more like the Denver Tech Center, which would have much higher landscaping requirements.
Kate Fuller has a question. Oh, did you take your hand down, Kate? Okay, Chair, I do not see any other hands.
Okay, so Nancy, procedurally, do we a motion to close the public hearing next?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Oh, Kate Townley has her head on, hand up.
I think I asked this last time, but I'm just wanted to double check. Parks are still an allowable use in M U B one or would be an allowable use in this. So the ten percent that Carl's referring to is for landscaping or greenery per site. But if a developer came in, because parks really do increase land value and are a great amenity for communities, they can still build a park or choose to do that as part of a parcel within the redevelopment.
Yes, you're correct. There's no, uh, provision that precludes a developer from providing much greater, uh, areas of landscaping if they so choose to do so. And they, and park use is allowed in all zone districts throughout the city. And so that is the definitely being allowable use here.
And I did sorry. Go ahead, Kate, sorry.
That would be something where it would either need to be, you know, a developer has the site or purchases the site and then chooses to use it as a park or allow public use on that site as a park or the city would need to purchase or maintain a site or a, sorry, a parcel within the area in order to have that be a public park, kind of like the plaza area is now and continuing to maintain that plaza area, I think is part of that, um, the station area plan.
Uh, so the Piazza area today is, is, uh, controlled and maintained by, uh, what's called a CAM, is that right? What, what does CAM stand for, Dan?
It's common area maintenance.
Okay, yes. And so, uh, our city parks department does not maintain things at city center. And most likely that some kind of form of maintenance structure like that is what will be prob, most likely going to be in place in the future development as well.
And I might just mention, John, quickly, I, you know, we don't have it for viewing tonight, but the the evolving redevelopment plan of S K B had two major, um, plaza, public spaces on block B. Uh, then they envision redeveloping the plaza area into a festival street. So right in that immediate area of the station, there'd be three big public open spaces. And, and a couple of them have a high percentage of landscaping.
Well, and I did notice, John, in your presentation, one of the questions I had in our last meeting was could developers get together and, um, share their open space so that there could be potentially a larger one? And I think you said two today, but I guess it could possibly even be three could get together and make a larger public space, if, if I'm correct, is that right?
Yes, I would agree. Uh, and the, the key is, are they adjacent?
Right.
There, if one is way over here by Santa Fe and one is over by Tacoma, that doesn't work.
No, no, it'd have to be adjacent, yeah, to make sense. No, no, it have to be adjacent. Yeah, to make sense. Absolutely. Any other questions or comments?
Do not see any.
Do I hear a motion to close the public forum?
I guess I have a question procedurally. Are we close closing both of them?
We're closing the public hearing on this particular case, then, John, there'll be, we'll go into the next public hearing on the official map.
Okay, thank you.
After we're done voting and the commission's done voting and things on this case.
So Nancy, are we closing the case Z O N 2020 dash oh oh two?
No, we should be closing case 2021 dash zero zero three.
Okay. Okay, great. So do I hear a motion?
I will make a motion to close case 2021 dash zero zero three.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Nancy, can you call for the vote, please?
Yes, and I just noticed we have lost Judy.
Oh.
Kate Townley.
All right, this is just the vote to close the public hearing, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, yes.
McDonaldson.
Yes.
Judy Brown is must have got dropped off. So Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes. So now you would go into discussion of if the commission wanted to discuss anything and then and then you would do your motion to recommend to city council.
Okay, I'm a little confused on this, Nancy. So we'd have a motion to further discuss what we just we just closed the public hearing, correct?
So you just closed the public hearing, which means you discuss amongst yourself if you wish. Staff wouldn't be able to answer any additional questions.
Okay.
All right. So it's just commission time. And then when you're done with any discussion, if any, you would make your motion.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay.
You're welcome. Judith, if I'm speaking out of turn, please jump in.
No, you're you're helping me. You're doing a great job. Thank you so much. And I see Judy Brown is back. Do we should we call for her vote on closing the public hearing or?
Sure. Judy, do you vote yes to close the public hearing in this one case, case 2021 dash zero zero three? She looks frozen.
She looks
Yeah, I think I think we're good.
Okay, all right. All right. So commissioners, is there is there a discussion amongst ourselves?
Sorry.
I do have I have no idea. Is that Judy, maybe?
Yes, Judy, you're breaking up pretty badly. And your video is frozen, just so you know.
Hey, this is Meg. I just I just wanted to comment and thank the staff for all the information and answering questions. It's been a lot of information and being new, I appreciate it and it's very helpful. So thanks for all of your work.
It looks like Judy's trying to log back in again. I would second Meg's comments. It's been a lot of work and to be honest, this is a really bold step for Inglewood. Both of these propositions are. It turns a lot of the future development of the core part of Inglewood over to staff with our input. And it's a huge step forward. So please, if you have comments or questions, let's let's air those now. Carl?
I agree with you. This is this is a huge project and it's been I've been there 38 years and I've never seen anything even close to this. And reading the TSA, it's basically scraping downtown area except for maybe Walmart and Petco is what I understand, but it's it's huge. It's going to be a very, very big project. It'll take probably over 10 years to accomplish the to get up and running. And this is really amazingly the the work that's gone into this, I can't imagine all the work that's been in this. It's been years in the making. But it's a huge, huge amount of data and information and whatnot. All right, I comment. A lot of this project is built on density and I have an issue with the density. Inglewood's density is much higher than it's like over twice of what Golden is and so Inglewood's density is 5,300 per square mile and Luton is 3,800 people per square mile. And Golden is half of what Inglewood is. The issue with that that I have is Inglewood and or Luton and Golden both have really very prosperous downtown areas. And their density is a lot less than Inglewood is. So is it? And Golden does have a DDA there, but their funding is fairly low. It's not going to be nearly what the DDA is going to be here. So this is a huge project and it's built on density and I I just don't see that the density is gonna and and right now there's like 1,500 apartments that are being either being built or in the planning stages and will will be built fairly soon. 1,500 more apartments and then the this project will build probably a couple of thousand, maybe possibly. So it's unknown how many of the people and so on. Nobody really knows. The density is a big part of this project and it whatever you have is going to get more busy with more people, but we already have a lot of people. So I'm not sure if it's going to be that productive or not. I just wanted to mention that.
Yes, if I can respond to that, I would say, you know, this is the most appropriate place for higher density within the city. And this is where we would want to have it rather than spreading it out around Inglewood, which I think would then create, you know, potential issues with more traffic or things like that. But having it in the downtown core area and on the light rail line and on the rail trail line. And I think this is the right area to to add that density in and to create a vibrant space. Because I think if we were to go a lower density, I don't think that's going to do us any any favors in the sense that, you know, just because there's the allowed density doesn't mean the developer is necessarily going to build to that. We also have a huge housing shortage in the state. We're in a housing crisis and we're have an opportunity now to reduce the amount of parking required, which can lower the cost of housing as well as provide opportunities for more density. If people are able to provide more affordable housing. And so I think this is the place that we should have it. I think it can reduce the cost of transportation in terms of being able to be close to the light rail or close to places where people can work. So that's my thought on it, Carl.
Brenda?
Yeah, I'll just kind of mirror what we're talking about here as far as density goes. I think that that is a good place for apartments and density too. But and we're counting on that people are going to want to continue to move to Inglewood. And I am for this for this amendment tonight, just so you know, I'm I if I were to vote on it, I'm going to vote for it. But do keep in mind, City of Inglewood, that they you have approved an apartment, a new apartment complex across the street, south of Hampton, where that old classic building stood right behind the by the south. And then just to the east of that, next to me, I too live right by Miller Field. There and they're going to be put in a little park, but it's another another stream of town homes is taking up the half right behind code enforcement. And there's going to be a little park and that's nice, but it is a lot of residents. And if this has got to be done in such a way that we don't end up with the same thing with retail stores and Belmar in Lakewood has the company going under foreclosure. So I don't want to go through that again. But the light rail, we really, I hope that we have some places to shop. And and you know, I'm cold with the density, but when you get off the light rail, there should be things to shop and buy and do. And why they couldn't even put a 7-Eleven there, I don't know. But that's that's my my only thoughts on this right now. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands, Chair. Oh, Carl's got his hand up.
Yeah, the we we need to be very careful on what kind of apartments we put in. Affordable apartments are going to bring in people that don't have any disposable income to spend in the shops that are going to be in the in the Inglewood area. So we gotta be. I mean, I I'm for affordable housing. That's we're we're losing affordable housing like crazy. So we do need some and we need to have some for people to come to Inglewood to to live here, but we got to be very careful on how we do that. And I mean, it's it's I'm I'm kind of talking out of both sides of my mouth here, but it's just a you you want to bring people in that have money to spend. That's the purpose for bringing them in to to bring them in here so they can spend money in the shops. We can open more stores and then have more spending going on, make more tax money for the city. So but the well, that brings up another point is the tax property tax on apartments. The city only gets like 30 or $40,000 for that per apartment per year and it's it's very minimal. The the schools get a lot more, but the city itself only gets a little bit and then I've seen police over at the the Bell Cherry Hills apartments a lot. And you get a fire truck and ambulance and three cop cars over there and you can't do a whole lot of 911 calls and then still make any money for the city. You do four or five of those and you're you're actually costing the city money. One other thing is the these are a lot taller buildings, the apartment buildings, 125 foot. We lost the Inglewood Fire Department because we had equipment that wasn't able to handle the higher buildings that we were getting. So these these are 125 foot. Have we checked with the fire department to see if they have equipment that will handle those buildings? And if so, if they need to get newer equipment, is that going to raise our contract with them?
Sorry, Carl, but this is the time for the discussion amongst the commissioner's staff can't answer questions now because the public hearing has been closed. If you'd certainly like to email John and Dan, they can respond in an email to all the commissioners. Judy Brown and then Kate Fuller.
Hopefully my internet won't just. I had to reset my router. Anyways, enough complaining. Yay for Comcast. So my my only concern goes back to the design review, and I know I harp on this, but I really want to make sure the public feels like they're involved. So my only comment, and it's not to the point where I won't approve this, is that I don't think I don't like that the design review committee basically has no say. Me, they have they're an advisory situation, but I personally would prefer to see something that says that if that advisory committee sees something that they feel should have more public input, that they should have the ability not just as an advisory, but simply to say this needs to I mean, have some power in making it go down a different path if necessary. And I and I understand the need for flexibility and the ability to respond quickly, but that's my only heartburn is that that advisory committee doesn't really have any final say since they're just an advisory. And I know what we're trying to do, but I I just feel like that might be a step too far. Just my feeling on that.
Can I ask something to follow up on Judy's comment?
Sure. And then it'll be Kate Fuller.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering if Judy, is there something you would recommend we put in either like as a in addition to what's presented tonight or just something to consider down the road? I'm just wondering if 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 there's different language or or something else that could be put in there to to make it stronger.
Okay, Kate Fuller?
I just wanted to kind of add on to what Carl was saying. I wonder because you were raising a concern about leaning in too much to affordable housing. But I wonder what options we have to encourage the developers to subsidize a percentage of units in their buildings? Or to maybe create spaces that they have like a slimmed down amenity package so they're able to be afforded by people. They don't have like a fancy pool or something like that. That way we could have teachers, social workers, people that work in the businesses nearby. Maybe they're just getting started. We still want to include those people in our economy because I just think that's really important, especially in this area of town. So I just wanted to add that in.
Chair Austin, I do not see another hands. Would you like to have a motion to recommend this to city council and take a vote?
So are we recommending that case 2021 oh oh three be we are approving it and sending it on to city council? Is that what we're doing, Nancy?
We're making a motion to recommend case 2021 zero zero three to city council.
Okay.
To approve. I'll I'll work with the language, but it's basically you can recommend, but Judy has her hand up real quick.
Yes.
I don't know if this is the place to do to make the comment on what Kate asked of me. I I would like and I don't know that I'm going to be putting in the I'm not not sure I'm going to say the language properly, but in my mind, I would like to see that design review committee do something similar in terms of the report, you know, recommend you know, based on our review, we recommend that this go forward without any modifications based on our review. So no modifications. And maybe even if it's just concerns about X, Y, Z, I mean, just sort of have a a thing that says we 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 like this or we would like to see changes in X, Y, Z, but there has to be some way for them to voice that and then feel like the who's ever the designee or however whoever in planning is going to be approving this to move forward that that there's some written recognition that the concerns that may or may not come up have been addressed. I don't know. I feel like there it needs to be a two way communication, not like, okay, you guys go spend you know, X number of days and hours and yay, thanks for your input and you get to feel heard. And you get to feel heard, but not really, because we're gonna do whatever we want anyways. So somehow that there's a, a written communication of why maybe their recommendation wasn't, why, why the final decision did not take into account what their concerns were. I guess I just feel like there's not a, I don't know. I don't know how to put it into words. I don't know if we wanna add it to this, but, you know, that's, I, I would like to see that them to have a little more teeth in their ability to make a, um, recommendation. So I don't know how we put that in. I don't, I don't know if this is the place. I wish I had better wording. I just couldn't come up with anything.
Nancy, would it be possible for us to do, um, a motion to recommend this to City Council? And ask them to please listen, I mean, I don't think we can actually make them, but please listen to the comments that we expressed this evening?
Dugan, could you take that question for me, please?
I believe you could. You know, you, you, you've got three choices. You can, you can approve, approve it as is, approve it with conditions, or you could, uh, not approve it at all. Which I don't think that's where the board is going, obviously, but, uh, you could approve it with a condition that Council, um, review the, uh, the Commission's, uh, discussions tonight. And I would think it would be just for the July seventh meeting and not necessarily for the, the meeting we had, what, two weeks ago now? Because I think that's where this discussion is going primarily is on tonight.
Yeah, it's when we've actually made our comments. And we just ask questions.
Yeah. So you could make a motion to approve and then, uh, and with, with the caveat that the Council will listen to the comments made by the Commissioners.
Okay. Judy, would you like to make such a motion? Would that take care of your concerns?
Yeah, I think so, but I'll make a motion to, um, uh, prove the, I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me. My computer, I just don't have anything up anymore. Um, but on this plan, TSA
case twenty-one dash zero zero three.
Dash zero zero three plan, um, with the, um, request that Council listen to the comments portion of the July seventh, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission review. Does that work?
If it works for Dugan and Nancy, it works.
It works.
Yeah, it works.
I just need a second, please.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Do we need to add the, um, the elements around the visitor accommodation, ground floor, commercial requirement? Those specifics to the motion, or that just carries as part of the, the case number?
It carries as part of the case number with the text amendments. Yeah, we don't need to put all of that in the motion.
A second.
Terrific. Further discussion? Seeing none. Nancy, would you call for the vote, please?
Sure. Kate Townley?
I vote yes to, um, approve these changes to the Title sixteen. I think it would be, um, it's in, you know, aligns with our comprehensive plan in terms of being able to, um, provide more of a mix of housing, as well as, um, provide, uh, visitor accommodations in our downtown area and in the M U B one area. Um, and also provides an opportunity to, uh, really have more of a say in terms of this catalytic area of the city, um, by not only doing the base rezone, but also by adopting the TSA specific plan. And, um, having more say in terms of what the architectural features and the character of the development, um, within that site will look like.
Thank you. McDonaldson?
I was just gonna say yes. That's okay.
It is perfect. It's perfectly good. Uh, Judy Brown?
I vote yes. Um, I agree specifically, uh, with the, um, adding the visitor accommodations and the other items related to the changes to Title sixteen. I feel like we did, um, a very thorough job of reviewing those, and I appreciate everybody on staff and on the Planning and Zoning Commission, because we did a lot of work on that portion of it, and I felt like we did a good job, um, on the, um, um, that's for the text amendments and then the, uh, Amendment of the City Inglewood Official Zoning Map.
Sorry to interrupt, Member Brown, but that's, we'll be taking that case next.
Sorry.
You're fine. Just wanted to.
The, the text amendments and the TSA specific plan adoption. Um, and I appreciate the, uh, work that the staff has done to answer the questions and adding up the Design Review Committee. I agree.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Uh, yes, and I'm encouraged by the, um, I guess what I would sum up as smart density. Um, so thank you to staff for this long, long process, and I'm, I'm happy of where we are.
Carl Adams?
I'm gonna vote no on this. I, I, I'm just concerned about the size of the project and the, uh, it's all based on the light rail connection. Uh, right now, the light rail has, uh, pandemic has basically shut the light rail Inglewood Station down. And I would like to see it recuperate a little bit before we jump on too much, uh, uh, planning on this. Uh, I, I appreciate the, uh, staff's, uh, work on this project. This is huge, and it's got, there's a lot behind it that we're not even being. So it's, I just, uh, there's a lot of things that I would like, uh, the hotel, um, definitely for the hotel and, uh, a couple of, some apartments, but not an overabundance of them. Uh, some of the buildings need to go, and we need to get new businesses in here, and there's a lot of good things about this, but, uh, I just, uh, I've, I've, I've seen changes in Inglewood, and this is just a huge change. I was re- reading the, um, uh, the TSA, uh, specific plan. And, uh, it's really, really involved, so the seventy million dollars that they're gonna get, uh, if they get that will probably not cover all everything that's gonna be done if Inglewood pays for it. If we have developers pay for it, that'll help out a huge amount. Right, at this time, I, I just can't go with it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
Chair Austin?
Carl, I appreciate your comments, and I think that you're correct that, um, there are some issues with RTD and, uh, the light rail and things like that. Um, my hope is that those things will sort themselves out over time. This is not a project that's gonna happen tomorrow, or even the next day, or even the next year. And I'm hoping that, um, your, your questions and issues will sort themselves out. Um, so I am gonna go ahead and vote yes on this project, but I appreciate your comments very much.
Thank you. Motion passes seven one.
So now we need to, uh, continue the case Z O N two thousand and twenty dash oh oh two. Is that correct, Nancy?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're continuing that public hearing? And I understand there is a presentation by Dan and Hillary for us?
No, I'm sorry. This is still on John. Dan and Hillary will be doing the downtown plan overview. We're still in public hearing.
Okay, all right.
You're okay.
Hey. John, take it away.
All right, I'm here this evening to, uh, continue the public hearing from June, or Ju- yes, June twenty-second. On case number Zone two thousand and twenty dash oh oh two, Amendment of the City of Inglewood Official Zoning Map to Rezone City Center Inglewood from P U D Planned Unit Development to M U B one Mixed Use Central Business District and adoption of the Inglewood TSA Specific Plan Overlay District. Once again, we had publication of the original public hearing on Ju- from, for June twenty-second in the June tenth edition of the Inglewood Herald. Uh, it was also published on the city's website from June second through today. The week of June seven eleven, there was a neighborhood mailing to all property owners and businesses and residents within one thousand feet of the subject area. On June twenty-eighth, five signs were posted, and I have proof, uh, certification of postings for those locations. They were at the R T Park and Ride, the Piazza Oval, the eight-hundred block of West Hampton Avenue, the corner of Floyd Avenue and South Cherokee Street, and the corner of Inglewood Parkway and South Alady Street. On June thirtieth, uh, continuation notice was sent out to a hundred and eighty-two subscribers. June thirtieth, a posting was made on the city's website in the news section. July first and through second, the Communications Department of the city did a social media posting. And July first, a, a feature article ran in the Inglewood Herald on the City Center Res zoning Project. Community Development Department staff request the Planning and Zoning Commission review, take public testimony on and forward to City Council a favorable recommendation for amendment of the City of Inglewood Official Zoning Map to Rezone City Center Inglewood from P U D Planned Unit Development to M U B one Mixed Use Central Business District and adoption of the Inglewood TSA Specific Plan Overlay District. And now I'll give you the final, uh, recommendations for findings of fact that case number Zone two thousand and twenty oh oh two is brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing by the City of Inglewood Community Department. That notice of the public hearing was published in the Inglewood Herald on June tenth, and that notice was provided to the Inglewood City Clerk to be published in the city's website from June second through June twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one. The notification letters were sent out to all property owners and addresses within one thousand feet of the proposed City Center Base Rezoning Area and the proposed Inglewood TSA Overlay District area the week of June seven eleven. That Inglewood Community Development Department staff held si- uh, seven Planning and Zoning Commission study sessions on the proposed, uh, regulatory parameters and the new TSA O area overlay district based on the two-tier quarter-mile and half-mile radius from the Inglewood Light Rail Station platform bounded by Hampton Avenue on the south, Santa Fe Drive on the west, Eastman and Floyd Avenues on the north, and Bannock and Akoma Streets on the east. That's a proposal to rezoning what City Center from P U D Planning and Development to M U B one Mixed Use Central Business District, an area generally bounded by Hampton Avenue on the south, Santa Fe Drive on the west, Eastman and Floyd Avenues on the north, and Alady Street on the east, and adoption of the Inglewood Specific Plan Overlay District generally bounded by Hampton Avenue on the south, Santa Fe Drive on the west, Eastman and Floyd Avenues on the north, and Bannock and Akoma Streets on the east are in conformance with the Inglewood Forward Co- Comprehensive Plan and the Inglewood Downtown Matters Plan of Development. And finally, that's a proposal to rezone Inglewood City Center from P U D Planning and Development to M U B one Mixed Use Central Business District narrowly generally bounded by Hampton Avenue on the south, Santa Fe Drive of the west, Eastman and Floyd Avenues in the north, and Alady Street on the east, and adoption of the Inglewood Specific Plan Overlay District generally bounded by Hampton Avenue in the south, Santa Fe Drive in the west, Eastman and Floyd Avenues in the north, and Bannock and Akoma Streets on the east should be adopted as an amendment to the City of Inglewood Official Zoning Map. Uh, and then I would just quickly want to go through a few areas of concern, some questions that were raised at the last, uh, June twenty-second, uh, meeting. The first question was, is there a reason to not go forward with the official zoning map amendment before the text amendments? And the answer is that, what, is that text amendments are essential to establishing the TSA Overlay District, which needs to occur prior to the official zoning map amendment. And so there is an order to those of these that makes, uh, rational sense. And I think we are following that order. Uh, we have just approved the first case, and now we're, uh, on here for the question of the second case, the actual rezoning of the official zoning map. And then the second question was, will text rezoning map amendment establish downtown development authority tax increment financing district? And the answer to that question is no. The text and zoning map amendments do not establish the downtown development authority tax increment financing district. The final analysis for this case is that this case will rezone City Center Inglewood from P U D back to M U B one, consistent with neighbor, the neighboring area to the east. And it also establishes the addition of a transit station area overlay district, which covers both City Center Inglewood and the extended area east of Alady Street to Bannock and Akoma Streets. Both areas are similar in scale, block size, and character. Uh, the, the station area to, the transit, the transit station area specific plan district extends out from the station approximately one half mile, which is a generally acceptable walkable distance for light rail station areas. And the, the, the TSA area overlay area does not extend beyond Bannock and Akoma Street to include the historic Broadway oriented corridor. And with that, I conclude my presentation on this case. And at this time, we could, we can take any public testimony that there may be additions to June twenty-second. And then I can also answer any questions that Commissioners have. And then the Commissioners can close the hearing and then deliberate on this case.
We have no public, Chair.
Thank you, Nancy. So are there questions for staff?
I do not see any hands.
I do not either. All right. So again, did we have a?
Motion to close the public hearing is the next step, yes.
Right, we need a motion to close the public hearing. Do I hear such a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Brenda. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none. Nancy, would you like to call for the vote to close the public hearing? Yo, and two thousand and twenty dash oh oh two?
Kate Townley?
Yes.
McDonaldson?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Kate Fuller? Did I lose Kate? Okay?
No, she's me.
Uh, Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Oh, yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
And I was out of turn, but in the previous case, we should have the motion to recommend and then vote on, or not vote on that, but then you have your discussion. I got it backwards last case, sorry.
So now, now we have discussion amongst ourselves, is that?
No, no, sorry. That's where I got it backwards in the last case. We should have the motion on the table, and then you guys can discuss and then vote, so that was my bad.
I'm still confused where we are now.
Motion to recommend approval of case Z O N two thousand and twenty dash zero two to City Council for approval.
Okay. So we need a motion, and then we'll discuss that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I apologize for the confusion.
No problem. I'm generally confused about this times of the day. Um, uh, do I hear such a motion?
I make a motion to, um, recommend the appro- recommend to City Council the approval of case number Z O N two thousand and twenty dash oh oh two.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And now, uh, is there discussion?
I do not see any hands.
I do not either. See no discussion. Nancy, would you call for the vote, please?
Kate Townley?
Oh, I see your hand up with Kate Townley.
Oh, Kate Townley.
I, I'll just add a comment, and I guess with my, with my vote is fine. Um, uh, I'll vote yes, and, um, uh, the rezoning meets the minimum size for a base rezoning. Um, it's not going to have any significant negative impact on the areas, um, surrounding this district. And, um, the proposed rezoning is also consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I can go into those specifics, um, or at least with the comprehensive plan in terms of live uh, one point three and one point four, uh, work one point three, two point two, two point four and three. Uh, the move, move elements of the comprehensive plan in terms of access to transportation and transit, as well as shop and bringing in new businesses to the area and, um, uh, increasing the appeal of our mixed-use districts. And learn number three. And I feel as though the, um, by providing the additional And I feel as though the, by providing the additional architectural guidelines and things through the. TSA specific overlay district. Will really help the city be able to guide what happens in this area in addition to providing. More assurances to developers by having. Know what's allowed in terms of use by right and MUB one as well as in the overlay district. And then by doing nothing and keeping the planned unit development right now. We wouldn't be able to really move forward with some of the visions and the goals of the city. So I vote yes.
Thank you. McDonaldson?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Judy Brown?
Thank you Kate for summarizing that so nicely.
I'm sorry Judy, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Oh yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay.
Now we're on to Dan and Hillary.
Now we're on to Dan and Hillary. Okay, I've been trying to get to you all night long. So finally, here we go. You may have the floor.
We'll try, we'll try to make this a little bit exciting for you guys. And the other thing we'll try to do, just to set expectations is to limit this to about thirty minutes. So try to wrap up about nine o'clock. And just to give you a little bit of background, this is an overview of the downtown planet development. That is the basic business plan for the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority, the EDDA as we refer to it. And you've received, I think, two or three prior briefings on this as it evolved through the work. Of the downtown matters initiative last year and the consultants and here again this evening. Is Hillary Portell, who was a key member of the consulting team and is now. The acting interim executive director of the EDDA and doing a great job. And so what we want to present to you is the downtown plan. This was recently approved for recommendation to the city. And under the state DDA statute is to be reviewed by. The Planning and Zoning Commission and then you all get to hopefully recommend it for approval to the city council. And you can add approval or endorsements to that motion. So our goal for tonight is really give you a comfort level about the plan, very little changed in the plan since. Last summer, since there was a draft of the plan that we reviewed with you then. And so that's our goal and Hillary is really has this down, so I will turn it over to her. And just add comments along the way or at the end. Hillary?
Thanks Dan. Thanks everyone for having us here tonight. Look forward to presenting to you again. We've come a long way since twenty twenty, since we started in January of twenty twenty. We've been through four seasons, one pandemic, several closure orders and reopenings. And we have a city council appointed very dynamic group of civic business leaders. Who are now steering this organization on the board of directors. And it's really a pleasure to work with them. And kind of hit the ground running with this downtown initiative. So I guess the first good news to share with you is that. Our downtown plan, which was directly informed by hundreds of community members, business owners, property owners in the downtown district and yourselves. Was named best downtown plan. Recently by the governor's award for downtown excellence and that's a statewide competition. So we're happy to be recognized for the effort and really enjoying now trying to make things a reality. Nancy, I'm not sure if I can make the slides go. I can, okay. So quick review, the Inglewood downtown plan redefines the downtown district. As much larger than the traditional main street along South Broadway. So what we're looking at is a central business district that includes the city center area. The South Broadway area and the medical district area, which we're starting to call the wellness district because of the different. Uses that are that are clustered there. It's about. Let's see. Hundred and eighty five acres comparable to downtown Longmont or downtown Golden. This is what people want downtown, according to our research, our community survey and the various. Meetings we had throughout twenty twenty. These are the words that come up again and again. You know vibrant, unique, walkable, safe, clean, affordable restaurants. Accessibility is the theme in this community. Because of Craig Hospital and many community members who are either elderly or currently disabled. These are kind of the big ideas that the the org, the plan is organized around. The first one we've achieved, we've created the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority. The second one, extend the vibrancy of downtown by adding more restaurants, jobs and entertainment. We want to have more activity, more time, more times of the day. Create a distinct authentic brand identity for downtown. We've started to work on that. Cultivate street. Sorry if you can see the street level activation throughout downtown. Connections and multimodal is a big theme in this plan. We have these three kind of distinct areas, each with their own context and history and identity. But they're not very well connected physically. So we're looking at a lot at sideways sidewalks, bike paths, shuttle systems, transit. What, what are the, what are the things that we can do, place making elements to create more cohesion downtown? Enhancing downtown vitality generally by working with downtown property owners and businesses. Increasing safety and comfort for everyone who utilizes downtown. And partnering with the private sector to promote catalytic redevelopment sites, particularly in the city center area. There are five sections to the plan, economy, jobs and housing, marketing and programming. Public spaces, mobility and transportation, land use and urban design. I should mention real quick, I meant to. This is not a detailed year by year implementation plan. This is a big picture. Long term document meant to extend a vision and recommendations to last for the next twenty years or so. So it, it, it has these various sections. It gives a existing conditions analysis. For each section and then it gives some specific recommendations for each sub area in that topic area. It's the job of the Inglewood DDA to create annual operational implementation plans. That flow from this bigger picture document. So in the first section, you know, we're, we're really looking at economic vitality. You know, trying to fill vacant storefronts, attracting new investment to the downtown area. Working with local businesses and employers, really encouraging a variety of home types and prices. Especially in areas that are directly served by light rail and transit. So our workforce, our essential workers who worked so hard all, all last year. Have places that they can continue to live in, in the city of Inglewood. Get involved in public policy issues such as services for people experiencing homelessness. Marketing and programming is pretty straightforward, establishing a brand identity for downtown, a new. Integrated marketing program. We've started that with the limited funding we have available this year. With a new website and an e-newsletter and a Facebook page and a print newsletter coming out on a quarterly basis. We're contributing to downtown events. And trying to stay very. Public places and spaces are very important in this plan. We're looking at clean and safe initiatives. We just. Did some spot maintenance on both South Broadway and Old Hampden. That's all about, you know, getting rid of the grit and, and the grime and the graffiti and the litter. Places that look picked up and clean. Tend to draw in customers and tend to discourage nuisance behavior. Places that look neglected and left behind. Tend to draw in nuisance behavior and discourage customer behavior. So you know, you want to keep things looking clean and neat to the best of your ability. We're also looking at enhancing existing spaces in the downtown area. We just were awarded. A one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from C dot. To improve the crosswalk and two passeos on South Broadway. By making them safer, multimodal, more accessible and more connected to surrounding businesses. That's one economic recovery grant we've been able to secure and we anticipate. You know, pursuing more of those opportunities. Land use and urban design is really about focusing redevelopment activities in the downtown core. Particularly in the city center area, but not exclusively there. Identifying catalytic sites for redevelopment. Encouraging compact walkable development, both in the city center area as well as the wellness district and along South Broadway. Try to expand our mix of uses and encourage adaptive reuse of the historic buildings, particularly on South Broadway. So that we're preserving that sense of local identity and we're supporting locally owned businesses in that corridor. So it's not just about new development. It's about renovating existing buildings and trying to help our, our local business main streets. Rise with the tide over, over a long period of time. Mobility and transportation is all about connections between the sub areas that I mentioned yesterday. Or yesterday, that's funny, a couple of slides ago. Possibly improving the Inglewood trolley service. Looking at other multimodal projects and services for the area, including analyzing parking. And making sure that we were providing for that in each sub area. I should also, I should add, it's not just about parking, it's about encouraging alternative. Transportation options. So we're going to maintain parking, but we're also going to make it easy to bicycle or use a wheelchair or use a shuttle. There should be a variety of ways for people to get around downtown safely. Depending on their, or without regard to their age or ability.
Uh oh, Hillary, you're kind of freezing up on us. Uh oh. You're back.
My back? Okay, the way to, the way to pay for this per state statute is tax increment financing. Which is not a tax increase for anyone. It's simply a way to capture new tax revenues generated in the downtown district. And reinvest them into downtown projects and improvements. And the way it works is that as the DDA starts getting involved in all of these activities. And investing in marketing and safety and public spaces and catalytic developments. The, the amount of taxes that the amount of new tax activity that's created, which is the blue here. Maybe it's new customer spending in downtown, maybe it's new businesses moving downtown or new development occurring downtown. This new revenue can be utilized by the DDA to reinvest in more downtown projects. As set forth by the downtown plan. The city, the county and the school district continue to receive the base level of revenue. So when we, we are able to turn on a TIF clock and we'll get to that in a minute. The, the base level of revenue is set and the city, county and. And school district continue to receive that revenue for the thirty year period. It will go up over time as well as property values are reassessed every two years. At the end of the TIF period, which is thirty years. The city, the county and the school district get one hundred percent of tax revenues generated by the downtown district. So we, the DDA are challenged to create this increment with our activities. So that we can reinvest it back into downtown projects and programs according to the downtown plan. TIF can be used for DDA operations. Public improvements programs, catalyst development projects. Financing of large or multi-year projects. Lot of the projects in the downtown plan are big, you know, redesigning Old Hampden, for example. Redesigning the Inglewood Parkway. Investing in new, new street trees along South, South Broadway. Those things can take several years to plan, design and implement. In terms of the approval to use TIF, the DDA board has statutory authority to approve. All uses of tax increment financing that the DDA undertakes. City council retains authority to approve the downtown plan of development. Any future TIF increment areas, the annual DDA budget and the use of bonding for large projects. So we have, as we've gotten started with the board and started to analyze. Tax increment financing in the downtown area, we've refined the sub area boundaries. So the initial sub area for the. Inglewood city center area was, was right in here and ended at the white line. We're now suggesting moving it to, to the black line. Because this area is more consistent now with the overlay zoning that John just presented. The land uses in the city center area and the potential use for TIF over the long term. South Broadway, we initially had ending roughly right here at Sherman Street. Now we're proposing moving it over to South Logan Street to capture the Safeway. Multi-tenant retail over in here that does relate more to the South Broadway retail mix than it does to the medical district area. And is more consistent with its zoning along South Broadway. And then the medical district.
Can I interrupt for just a sec? Can you, can you tell the first black line, what those streets are?
This one here is a coma street up to, oh, what is that, is that?
And then Bannock.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. And then the medical district would go from Logan Street out to Lafayette. Each sub district can potentially have two TIF increment. Sub districts and it, there's property tax and there's sales tax in each area. So we are proposing. Turning on three TIF collection areas right now. One is. Property tax and sales tax in the medical district area. And the other one is sales tax along South Broadway. And the reasoning for that is that there is considerable new residential and commercial development. Underway or in the pipeline along Old Hampden right now. Something like ten projects with about three hundred and fifty seven residential units and over a hundred thousand square feet of medical office. So that's new property tax increment. That can be put back to use in the downtown area if we can start collecting it in twenty twenty two. Similarly, as the area starts to recover from the economic downturn. As more economic recovery funds are invested into the downtown area. And as the DDA gets going with its programming and activities. We expect that sales tax revenues will start to recover along the medical district area and within South Broadway. Probably gradually, you know, and that's okay. But let's go ahead and set up those increment areas so that we can capture that little bit of extra. Revenue every year to reinvest back in the downtown area. And this is just sort of our new contact information, how to find out more. We have a, we have a website. As I mentioned, the Inglewood downtown dot com and a Facebook page. I hope you, you check out both of them and feel free to follow us on Facebook as well. Any questions?
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Fifteen minutes?
Very succinct.
Okay.
Nancy, I need your help on with the hands that are raised.
I don't see any hands. I don't see any hands at the moment.
Okay. Just to clarify, this is, is, this is an informational presentation? Are there active, are, is there some action that we need to do, Dan or Hillary?
Yes, what we'd like to do is see a motion from the commission to recommend approval of the downtown plan to city council. And, you know, you, along with that recommendation can be, you know, an approval or endorsement of the plan by the commission as well. And this is what, this is a required step under the state D D A statute is for review and recommendation by the commission prior to consideration by city council. I will say that we have had quite a bit of review of D D A matters with the council just in recent weeks. We had a very detailed briefing study session with them on the 21st of June. We reviewed a lot of this. And then last evening, we had three items up for council votes, all of which were successful and that they approved by motion the 2021 budget and operating plan and on first reading the debt authorization ordinance and the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the D D A. So there's been a lot of work going on as the D D A gets established this year and council seems to be well on board with that. They gave us the direction in December to go ahead and, and take all steps to fully establish the D D A. And the city has effectively loaned the first year of operating funding to the D D A, which is $200,000. That'll eventually be paid back through collection of the tax increment financing that Hillary mentioned. So just to give you a flavor that this recommendation of the downtown plan fits within the overall game plan that's been described in great detail to the city council.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the downtown, Inglewood Downtown Development Authority and recommend approval to city council? Is that, is that about right, Dan?
Yeah, so it would be the, specifically the D D A downtown plan of development.
Okay. Do I hear such a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Brenda. Do I hear a second?
A second.
A second.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Further discussion? I see none. Okay. See no discussion. Nancy, would you like to call for the vote, please? Kate Townley?
Yes.
McDonaldson?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are really doing a lot of work here and it's great to see it happening so fast. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that the next order of business are staff's choice, the staff's choice.
I have nothing. Chair Austin, can you hear me?
I can. Yes, Brad.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Other than apologizing for being late to the meeting due to some technical difficulties, I don't have any other report other than Commissioner Hubka, welcome on behalf of the community development staff to the commission. We're looking forward to working with you. And that's it for me today. And appreciate your work this evening, as always.
Thank you. Brooke?
I have nothing to add.
Nancy?
I would just remind the commission that our, our next meeting is August 3rd, or excuse me, July 20th, I apologize. And that will be a public hearing as well on a P U D application at 1070 West Hampton Avenue. So we will be having another public hearing.
Okay. Dugan, I think it's attorney's choice now.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Commissioner's choice. I'll just go around how I see you on my screen. Kate Fuller?
Nothing to add, but thank you so much, Hillary, for that presentation. It was really awesome.
Noel?
I'd like to thank especially Nancy for all the work she does for us, including naming me Noel Austin for this evening.
Since I, I noticed that because we are sharing the same last name tonight, and I thought that was a little odd, but, you know, welcome to the Austin family.
That's funny because I didn't change your name, so how interesting.
We're, we're a nice family. It's okay. Judy Brown?
I got nothing. Thanks.
Okay. Kate Townley?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, McDonaldson?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Brenda?
I just thank you all for welcoming me in this very exciting commission and in this opportunity. Thank you all for your work.
Welcome. And Carl?
Nothing for me. Can I be on Atkins too?
Well, he wasn't Austin for a while, but now he's already, he's forsaken us and now he's back to Atkins. So I don't know what that says about my family, but that's okay. I have no further comments either, except for to say thank you to all, obviously, staff and Hillary. You guys have all done an enormous amount of work that we learned today. And Nancy, thank you as always for keeping us on track and, and keeping me on track in particular and steering me the right direction, making sure that we're doing things legally and in the appropriate manner. So without any further comments, I will announce that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.